Good evening. This is the City of Twinsburg Planning Commission meeting for Monday, August 16th, 2021. Roll call.
Mr. Shipley.
Here.
Mr. Metropolis.
Here.
Mr. Kleiman. Mr. Cohen.
Present.
Mr. Shebeck.
Present.
We could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We begin this evening with our public hearing, a conditional use permit request for a religious institution at 9945 Vail Drive, Suite Number Two. The applicant can please come forward. This is your opportunity to present to the community what you're looking for this evening.
Thank you. And thank you all. Twinsburg Chabad, our organization, is currently the only organization that services the Jewish community here in Twinsburg. And we began our activities several years ago, doing it mostly in either private homes or public gathering spaces like party rooms, et cetera. So we are looking into getting a more permanent location. So we were, that's what we were looking at, at that address. There's an empty suite there, 1,500 square feet, and we wanted to use it not for very large gatherings, that would, the space is quite small, but for our weekly events, that would be Saturday, Sunday, which is usually education, worship, or other services, and for during the week, which is, which is much smaller. I know that there was some of you, the issue that would be raised would be parking, and so just to clarify, there are right now, I think, close to 50 parking spaces. During the week, there is a large amount of cars every, at every given moment. The, I think the, from my conversation with Larry, it seemed that if we count all the workers, all the doctors, and all the customers that they can handle at a certain hour, at a certain time, it comes to about 30, 40. But during the week, during work hours, we don't do much, much at all. We actually schedule everything to be outside of work hours. So when the parking lot is at capacity, we wouldn't have more than four or five cars maximum. And during weekends is our larger gatherings, which would draw between 10 to 15 cars at most. We have, we do have larger events, like Hanukkah parties and high holiday services, but we don't do those there. We don't do, we do them in more public areas, like this coming high holiday next month is going to be at Glen Eagles. So that's where we're going to continue going forward with that. And just, I would make a simple point that the capacity of the space itself is less than the capacity of the parking lot. So we will quicker reach the limit of people that we can handle comfortably in the center before we actually, you know, use up all the space in the parking lot. So that's pretty much, that's all. Thank you very much, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Opportunity for members of the community to come forward now and speak on this. Anybody who would like to speak either for or against, or just in general on this, now is the opportunity. Come forward, your name and address, please.
Sure. My name's Larry Miller. I'm the owner of the property. Just a couple maybe questions. The first is regarding parking for some of the holidays that fall during the day, and there are, again, not many of them. My concern or question is, will the city have any issues if cars had to park on that cul-de-sac? Now, I've been in the building, we put it up, we opened Twinsburg Dental Associates, a couple patients here, in 2000. And my recollection is that maybe twice a year, Legacy would host an open house. And not only did they park around the cul-de-sac, but they parked in my building, taking up quite a few places. So it was a pretty busy, obviously with COVID, that's not occurring. My guess is, once, hopefully that's controlled sooner than later, that they'll be back to doing that, I'm assuming. So that's, that's one concern. I don't know, I tried to get ahold of one of my friends from the fire department, John Dunn. I don't know if that's an issue. The second thing, too, if push came to shove, and I've talked to Lynn about this, is that we would have some availability to put in additional parking spaces on the backside of the building. I counted off maybe 15 or so, but we're infringing on the property next door, that empty lot. I don't know if anybody, if you guys are familiar with the property there. The, the odd thing is, and Lynn's been trying to help me with this, they do not have any signs up there. My understanding is that Legacy owned that property and sold it to somebody. Lynn gave me their information, and I've tried to mail something to them, and it came back to me. So I'm not sure they've got the lot there, but they're not doing anything with it. And we wouldn't need, I think it's almost five acres you had indicated, so we're not in compliance now, and I, without infringing on their property. So I at least wanted to look at that as an option, but have no way of knowing how to do it. As I said, there are no signs there, you know, space available, five acres, calls, such and such. So that would be another option for us down the road if, you know, Rabbi Greenberg, you know, decided, hey, we'd like to stay here, we need some more parking though, that would be an option. So, but I was concerned about if, if we had to park around the cul-de-sac. And if, if that were the case, I'm guessing it'd only be maybe like twice a year, and probably it wouldn't happen, but just in case if that would be an issue.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this, now is the opportunity. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll roll into the work session with the first item being the conditional use permit request. Rabbi Greenberg, if you'd like to come back up to the podium. Just to address a couple of the comments from Mr. Miller, obviously regarding parking in the cul-de-sac, that's not a planning commission issue, that would be the city issue, whether or not to determine if that's acceptable. And second, based on Rabbi Greenberg's presentation and the information we received, the high volume times where they would have larger events, appears that those won't be taking place in this location, the high holidays and some of the other larger gatherings. So it might not be an issue, but I like the idea that you're being prepared, and if additional parking was needed, you know, that would be something that could be explored and a possible variance could be granted if, if it seemed like it was a reasonable request. Can't really say yes or no at this time, but it's something just to consider going forward. Rabbi Greenberg, is there anything else that you'd like to share about your request this evening? If not, we'll go through the board and see if there's any questions.
I think I said everything. We're good. Unless you have any questions.
David, anything on this? No questions. Steve?
Welcome to the community, and we're glad to have you. And the fact that you're going to start, you know, putting down some roots in our, in our community is great. I think the parking issue is, the way you presented it in the documents you submitted is, this is mostly basically business offices and maybe a little bit of education. So as we go forward, if you see more traffic coming there, then we'll have to look at the traffic, parking issue, and work with your landlord on that. Parking in the street, it's, that's, that's a police matter, and...
Exactly. That's what I'm thinking, that you want to call the police department and say, we're having this event.
Yeah.
We envision possibly a few vehicles parked on the cul-de-sac. Is that an issue? Yeah, that's who you want to contact.
Yeah, it's typically not supported because of ingress egress issues, but there are some options open to you, you know, there's some other parking areas that folks can go into. But it sounds like you're doing most of your large events in other venues.
Right, like I, like I said, that, there's only so much space that I can fit in, you know, only so many people can come in anyway. So, yeah.
So we welcome you, and we hope you can grow within our community.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Pete?
Yes, I believe the parking issue is down the road. I mean, zoning is the same for both parks, so I don't see where that would be an issue, but that does not have to be addressed now. Other than that, everything appears to be fine.
Thank you. Craig?
Yeah, I have no, no comments from one has already been discussed, so, welcome.
Thank you.
Scott, anything on this?
Uh, no, other than I...
Ooh, hot mic.
Just glad to see that you're putting down some roots in Twinsburg, and I agree with the members of the commission, I don't see any immediate parking issues, and welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Lynn, anything else on this that we should be aware of?
Staff brainstormed on this a little bit for you guys, and we said, well, I wonder if the veterinary clinic would be an opportunity in off-hours for some overflow parking. Just a thought.
They used to be patients of mine, so I can contact that facility and ask, although their parking is pretty limited, too, but...
I realize that, but...
Yeah, but I don't think he'd object if it were on hours, we could look at something. So I'll contact them just then.
I love the idea that, you know, we're gonna have an overflow, I've got 60 cars on a regular weekend or something.
All right, so I think that's out for the moment, Rabbi. If you want to have a seat in the regular meeting portion of tonight's agenda, we'll make a motion regarding the request. Second item on the work session, it's minor subdivision request cornerstone business park phase six. Applicant, could please come forward, name and address, and a quick review of what it is that you're looking for this evening.
Hi, my name's Chris Dempsey with Dempsey Surveying Company. My company prepared the, this plat that we're looking for approval on. This will be cornerstone phase six. My company prepared phases two through six, and we've been in contact coordinating with Lynn and Matt Weber, the city engineer, to make sure that all the necessary easements are in place. And here to entertain any questions you may have on it.
Thank you. Lynn, this is really more of just a housekeeping thing, it really puts everything up to date, adds all the easements and everything, you know, because they're already on their way and developing, so...
Exactly.
Okay. David, any questions on this?
No.
Steve?
I have nothing, no.
Pete?
Everything appears to be in compliance, so I have no questions.
Craig?
Yeah, I have no, no questions.
Scott?
Nothing for the city.
Pretty straightforward, I mean, it's just a matter of going through what needs to be done here for the city. So same thing, we'll get back to you here in a short time at the regular meeting and make a motion on this.
Thank you.
Third item on the work session is the consideration to limit or prohibit medical marijuana facilities. Lynn, is there any issue with us just moving this to the regular meeting agenda and then getting through these other items and...
No, I was almost gonna ask you in advance if we should just do that.
Okay, yeah, that, that's fine, let's, let's just handle that, that way. So it's 7:14, and we'll roll into the regular meeting agenda. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the June 21st, 2021, planning commission meeting. Are there any comments or corrections? Lynn, under the motion on page, page two of the agenda, or I'm sorry, the minutes, where it says, "Pardon my mistake, representations made by the applicant along with the submitted lot split survey," it should say lot split plant, and the date stamped received is June 14th, as opposed to June 1st.
Got it.
Anybody else have any comments or corrections? Seeing none, the minutes will be accepted as amended. Public participation, it's the opportunity for members of the community to come forward and ask any questions of the planning commission. Seeing none, we'll go on to item three, which is the conditional use permit request for the religious institution. Rabbi Greenberg, if you could come back to the podium for a quickie here. Anything else that you'd like to share with planning commission at this time?
I think we made everything clear.
I believe so as well, just need to be sure. Once around, just to be sure, David. Steve?
No, good.
I'm good, I'm fine.
Pete?
No.
I was just gonna ask you if you want to join our congregation.
I always look for a spot for a holiday, you never know. I'd like to make the following motion, upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant, along with the submitted conditional use request and application for Twinsburg Chabad, 9945 Vail Drive, Suite Two, date stamped received July 16th, 2021. I move that planning commission recommend to city council issuance of a conditional zoning certificate to allow a religious institution in the C2 community business district.
I'll second.
Second by Steve, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shebeck?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Metropolis?
Yes.
Mr. Kleiman?
Yes. So this is a positive recommendation to city council, they will make a move and have the final vote on your request.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the regular meeting agenda is the minor subdivision request for cornerstone business park for the final plant. Mr. Dempsey, if you'd like to come back up for a moment, anything else that you'd like to share with planning commission this evening?
Can't think of anything.
David? Steve?
I'm good.
Pete?
I'm fine.
Craig? Like to make the following motion, upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant and their representative, along with the submitted plat for cornerstone business park phase six, permanent parcel number 64-00380, date stamped received July 22nd, 2021. I move for final plat approval of the minor subdivision.
Second.
Second by Craig, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Metropolis?
Yes.
Mr. Kleiman?
Yes.
Mr. Shebeck?
Yes.
Final approval 5-0, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the final part is the consideration for the medical marijuana facilities. Everybody should have received some additional information from Lynn after our last meeting. Lynn, are there some highlights you'd like to touch on?
There are some highlights, so I did...
No, unattended.
All right.
I did some additional research. You should have received in, what you got, mailed this la, in this last packet, a map of the dispensary districts. So the, the state has divided, been divided into districts, Summit County is its own district, number three. Within that district, we have been allotted two additional licenses. So out of the 73 additional ones that have been proposed, oh, excuse me, two additional licenses will be allotted for Summit County.
Dispensaries.
Dispensaries, yes. At this time, there's been no discussion, to my knowledge, at the state level about additional cultivators or processing facilities, just these retail dispensaries. So just of note is, when we're making these decisions, the two additional licenses will be dispersed in Summit County. My guess is at this point, those locations have already been determined for this round. I don't know if I included in this that, that the objective here is to serve 1,200 people per dispensary and to not allow that number to be as high as it is for some of these districts. It's just, there's not enough dispensaries, some of them are serving too many people, there's no convenience here, and there's just this lack of availability. So these additional licenses are trying to fix that problem, and they're being geographically distributed according to the district population and according to the number of registered patients. So that's what's making that determination and is creating additional licenses to get this service number to 1,200 per dispensary. So then I went back and I looked at the various locations, like we discussed at our last meeting, and I can see that some of the, a good many of them are on a highway or interstate interchange and may have some proximity to a hospital or medical facility. I think that's why there's probably been interest in Twinsburg, since we can check both of those boxes here in the community. Not all of them have met those criteria, there's some dispensaries just in very, very rural areas, just on a state highway. It looks like they, the facilities themselves run the gamut physically to storefronts in downtown areas, just rural locations on the, on a roadside, and then a lot of them are sort of medical building or in actual medical buildings where other medical providers are located. So there wasn't a whole lot of consistency in terms of that, there was one, one in Cuyahoga Falls, maybe it's in a shopping center. But it looked like they skewed towards medical buildings if they could be located there. So then I Googled, you know, break-ins, robberies at retail dispensaries, just to see what would pop up. So there have been a couple of those, notably in maybe Painesville, there's a couple of facilities, and maybe the one in Youngstown. In one of those events, items were stolen, and the other one, they, they were not successful. There are these, things are pretty highly secured, it took saws to get through drywall and metal in the one instance, and in that instance, other buildings were also robbed that evening in that community. So, you know, no surprise, yeah, there's a little bit of targeting of these facilities for break-ins. But in all those instances, they were back up and running in a day or so. Something else to think about, when we spoke last time, I think we were, were not overly focused on sort of the, not so much regional, but definitely a service area well outside of the community. And so for that reason, you know, we may want to hone in on that interchange business district as the appropriate location. I think that's what these providers are looking for, and the intent of that district is definitely to provide a service outside of the boundaries of the community, whereas that, the C2 district and the C1 district, definitely its purpose is to serve, serve more of a neighborhood or community geographic area. So just my thoughts on the way our zoning is structured and the way it looks like the state is intending for these dispensaries to serve the public. They most certainly are not intended to serve only the community in which they're located.
All right, anything else?
That's it.
All right, thank you. I'll go first, and then we can head down the line. I am in support of the medical marijuana facilities in all three instances, retail dispensaries cultivating and the processing. I, I look to support the retail dispensaries in the C2 and the C3 districts, those are the community business and interchange business districts, but I would like to see those as a conditional use permit. And then cultivating in the I1 and I2 and I3 use, basically all of our industrial uses as a permitted use, and processing in the I2 and I3 uses also as a permitted use. So dispensaries would be the only, would be the only conditional use, and it just gives us that other opportunity just to look at them all a little closer and, and put in other requirements depending on where they pick. I don't see a need to put in any other restrictions on locations, the state has mandated a pretty good way of how these have to be spaced out and located relative to other pieces of the community. And as we look at ours, especially regarding retail dispensaries, there's probably only a half a dozen or so spots where this would work in the C2 and the C3. So I don't think there's a lot of options, you know, should they choose to want to come into Twinsburg. So that's the way I view it at the moment. David, thoughts?
The attend item has limit or prohibit. I would definitely be for limiting as opposed to prohibiting and getting more in felt, which Lynn's done a great job, thank you for doing all that.
No problem.
That was excellent. I'd like to learn more, but I'd be great to see something along those lines in, in very specific areas.
Well, and what I would envision is that this, if, if a recommendation is made tonight, this will move on to city council, and then city council will make a decision, and then it's, it will go on to the ballot as an additional use, and then the voters will, you know, be able to make a final determination. And then, and then at that point, yeah, if there were other restrictions or conditions or an ordinance written, then we may view it again.
I just, I think it's a good idea, and, you know, I'm looking at the map of Lakewood, I think it's very convenient how close the Insomniac Coaches franchise is, so I definitely want to get on that board, that too.
All right, thank you. Steve?
I think we should just welcome any business that wants to come in, and I think the framework and structure that's been put in place for this activity by the state is very solid. And as I said before in our previous meeting, I don't see this anymore as a threat than the CVS who has narcotics that are a lot more powerful than medical marijuana. So you can't do anything about crime, but all the facilities are going to definitely have systems in place to deter that, as you found through your Google search. So I, I think, I think it's a benefit to the people who need it, and I think we should be business friendly and just, and welcome it. And I have no problem with it coming to us for review, but I don't want to put any restrictions on it.
Thank you. Pete?
Well, I believe we should have some limits, not necessarily prohibition, but if, these facilities, they don't fit C1 or C2 uses, they are C3 uses. I think we're gonna have to add five votes in addition to our table, so we can put additional, permit additional type of uses in those C1 to C, in C1 and C2 areas. When you're looking at cultivating and processing, I think it's definitely a requirement of change. That's my thoughts on it. So many changes. But we have no agricultural uses in the city, we don't have to get that added, because we don't really, the way I read what we have.
Well, we are allowing greenhouses in the industrial district, and we're also allowing processing and manufacturing. Essentially, this is processing, because the horticulture, the cultivating part of this is entirely interior, it's not, it's more processing than agricultural.
Right, but my point is, just as an example, going through this over and over again in my mind, we're dealing with land uses here, and a pharmacy is a pharmacy, doesn't matter whether it looks like a bank or it looks like a warehouse. All right, we've got to think in terms of land use, can't be thinking, well, oh, well, let's just redefine what they're doing as something else and go with it. I mean, I want to have some form of groundwork to lay my foot on, if I'm proceeding with that. And I really believe that we're going into cultivating and processing, we're going to need a zoning change.
So if, if planning commission makes a recommendation to council to allow these uses in the I districts, and they look at moving on this, I'm assuming they'll be working with legal to make sure the zoning code is put into a position where it, if it's approved by the voters, that it's something that can challenge, that it will meet whatever the requirements, some of which Pete brings up.
Yes.
Okay.
That would happen, the, that would be made part of the ballot issue.
Right, because I'm looking really at two things, one, do we need an additional zone, which I believe we do, and two, do we need to add something to that table where we are allowed to make conditional use from? Those are my two, those are my two concerns. allowed to make conditional use from? Those are my two, those are my two concerns.
That's what would happen. If it went, if, if council was in an agreement that, or that's the, a recommendation and council adopted that recommendation, then it would go on the ballot as a conditional use, yea or nay, from the electorate. That's how it would be added to the conditional use, um, chart.
All right. Anything else?
No, that's it. I just-
I have a question. Is, would happen that kind of language? Are we, are we segregating that kind of business? Are we making it somewhat different? Because I don't really see it as anything different than what Coca-Cola is doing. They're bringing their raw product. They're processing it. They're putting it into some type of container and they're shipping it out.
Right. I think the only reason to make it a conditional, yeah, to, to make it a conditional use permit would be because of the state limitations. It would be a way to formally verify that those conditions had been met. I mean, I can measure 500 feet. I don't, it's not absolutely necessary and so can the building commissioner, but, um, that would be the only reason, definitely in terms of the cultivating or processing, to make that conditional. For example, um, New Adventures Daycare would fit the state definition of a school that's located in an industrial district by conditional use permit. So, if you got a processor or cultivator that was within 500 feet of that now, you wouldn't be able to approve it. It would have to be further from that area. Um, but there's not a, an extensive list of limitations put on this by the state. So, to, to drag a cultivator or processing applicant through a conditional use permit probably isn't necessary. There's, there are more opportunities to fail at that 500-foot limitation in our commercial districts.
That's the reason why I looked at that one as a conditional use, but the other two as permitted uses.
Yeah.
Craig?
So I guess, um, I'm, I'm in support of, of all three. Um, I, I would probably like to limit to the C3 interchange business district, just me personally. Um, it feels like, uh, like it's well stated that that's used to, uh, supply a larger geographical area than just Twinsburg. So, um, but that would be, you know, a short Google search brought up two, you know, uh, security issues. You know, if that was a larger issue than, than just that Google search, I probably would like to keep it outside the city. Um, but now I'd have to, me personally, I would just have to, have to see more information to support that, that, that decision. Um, as for like the, the zoning side, you know, processors, I, I think that does fit within our, our, our zoning laws. Now, the cultivators, I could, I could see Pete's, Pete's concern. Is that really agriculture or not? Um, so I guess, you know, contingent on those being answered by, by the legal department, I would support, you know, the, going forward and, and support it.
Thank you. Um, I would like to make a motion on this this evening and, um, with the recommendation to, um, city council and to urge Scott when we go to the meeting, should we approve this or make this recommendation this evening, to not leave six months, you know, to utilize it full-time. I mean, they didn't want to do something until they got our input. They're going to get that. And I would like to see them move in a timely fashion, um, so that the opportunities, I mean, it, it still has to go on the ballot. There's still the process and I don't know what the timing of that is, but I don't want to miss out on November opportunity to get it on the ballot if that's still possible. So, I guess from the discussion we had, um, it sounds like there are two comments, uh, two things I need planning commission members to comment to guide of me in my motion. Are you in support of C2 and C3 or only C3? Um, and are you okay with making the retail dispensary a conditional use request or permit as opposed to permitted by rights? Uh, David?
You can tell you what I asked.
Sure. I, 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 I prefer, so you're not personally, I, I support the C2 and C3.
I'm sort of reading the menus.
And I, and I would like to see it as, as a conditional use and the other two as-
And to, to correct more. I'm, in looking at the maps that we put together, if the C3 is the area that is surrounding the interchange in the downtown district, uh, and C2 has it farther away from there, I would tend to lean towards C3 versus C2.
Okay.
C2 would include the shopping centers.
It would?
It, C2 would be the, the strip center on Darrell Road would be town center, at least a portion of it. And it would be, um, the Ravenna Road Shopping Center.
Is most of the diagonal parts of C3?
Most of it is C2.
C2.
And then a portion of it is C5. Um, Creek Site Drive is C3, some other properties there. And of course, um, the, the Wendy's, Damian's, Donato, um, um, area is C3 as well as, um, Burger King, McDonald's, the gas stations there. That, those are three C3 districts.
It would be great if we could manage to keep it as far away from population areas as we can and closer to that.
It's, I will say this, it's limited, no matter how you slice it. If you've included the C2 and the C3 in a recommendation, um, the C2 is limited by that 500-foot required setback the state has imposed for schools, parks, churches.
So that, I, that's why I don't see any need to limit it because there's state restrictions that are going to drive that.
Anyhow, and I will say that, that all of this, those C2 locations are on a state highway. Are they adjacent to residential areas on, at, on Ravenna Road? Yes. Um, the Darrell Road location is by the school, so that's probably a, a known starter there.
I guess based on the restrictions that are in place, I'd be fine with C2 or C3.
Yeah.
All right. Steve?
I'm good with C2 or C3, uh, based on our vacancy rates in the city. Uh, we should be welcoming business. Uh, these are run in a very respectable manner. It's not like, like a cigar shop or something like that. I mean, you can't get it unless you have a prescription. And from what I've seen from the facilities that are out there, they're very top-notch. They're, um, top of the line as far as appearance and everything. So, uh, I just think we should welcome any commercial activity we can to get into the city to fill these vacancies that we see, especially now with the push towards online shopping. This is one of the things that you cannot get online. So it's going to be in a storefront. So, so I'm good with, with your suggestions.
Thank you. Pete?
Well, I can see C3. I can see conditional use on C2. And, uh, if we're going to go to, um, processing, cultivating, uh, I believe we still need definitely a zoning change.
And again, I, I don't disagree with that. That is where the legal part of our, will come into play to make sure that they put it, our recommendations sit into the right, the right way along with working with the planning department.
I had another thought, that if it is by conditional use permit, that does give us a formal opportunity to look at lighting and other security components. Even though the state's reviewing for that, um, it's another sort of safety valve for maybe things the state's not overly aware of in a local situation.
Craig?
I guess after the, the discussion with, you know, the 500-foot setback and the limited use in C2, I guess I could live with the, uh, the, uh, conditional use of C2. Um, you know, my, my thought is looking down, you know, in two years from now, if we allow, uh, you know, these, uh, distribution centers and then it becomes recreational use, are we still going to allow them in the same place? And would we put more limitations on that and bring more traffic in? I know, I know we shouldn't look there because that may come and it may be totally different other rules, but my, I'm thinking like I'm not wanting to round in public areas because that'll bring in even more traffic.
So I, so today I had that same thought. Well, okay. So with, there's current action to legalize recreational marijuana in the state of Ohio. So what if at some point that gets approved? It doesn't appear as though then because you have a lot of medical marijuana, you're going to have a recreational component forced upon you. I think at that point you could still opt out of the recreational type of facility. In the state of Michigan, it looks like the, every community, township, city could opt in to both, one, the other. They could opt in or not to cultivating and processing. They could establish a local number of licenses that they would allow. They could put other constraints. Um, I just saw documentation online from their state regulatory board and every community was, when they went to recreational, they were able to opt in or out of that and add limitations if they chose. I would see Ohio doing a similar type.
What I, what I've read on recreational uses, they're not going to do it as part of the constitution. So it's going to be-
Right.
-a statute and there's all these home rule things that come into effect. Michigan is a home rule state, so we're going to have some authority if the state moves to a recreational use.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I'm going to make the following motion then, based on, uh, our discussion. So, I move that planning commission recommends to city council the following regarding medical marijuana facilities, to allow retail dispensaries in the C2 community business district and the C3 interchange business district as a conditional use, to allow cultivators in the I1 intensive commercial and light industrial district, I2 limited industrial district, and the I3 heavy industrial district as a permitted use, and to allow processors in the I2 limited industrial district and the I3 heavy industrial district as a permitted use. Second?
Okay.
David, any final discussion on this?
I guess quit somewhere.
Lynn, a little call please.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes?
Mr. Kleiman?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Metropolis?
Yes.
Mr. Shebet?
Yes.
Uh, Scott, when this is, uh, up for discussion, I'm sure which it will be at city council, you can surely let them know that there was definitely some discussion on the C2 versus the C2 and C3. Um, but obviously decided having the conditional use, um, everyone seemed to support having that in both. Um, and again, uh, then I'm assuming that the same information package must-
Will pass it up.
...be available.
Yeah.
Um, so they'll be able to see and understand, you know, what Ohio already has in place and why we felt that it was enough of a, of a regulation without us adding any additional, um, requirements on top of that.
Certainly. Um, I'd like to thank Lynn for putting this together.
Yeah, no problem.
Extremely informative. Uh, I learned quite a bit.
So did I.
I'd like to, I'd like to thank the, the members of the planning commission, uh, for the thought that went into the motion this evening. Um, I will make sure that council addresses this in a timely fashion, um, bearing in mind a 90-day issue filing deadline, I believe was August 4th. A 60-day filing deadline is September 3rd. Not being an attorney, I can't speak to what's applicable in our specific instance, um, but it's something I can certainly discuss with Mr. Maestros via phone here before the next council meeting, which is a week from tomorrow. So, but yeah, I agree, this needs to be, uh, addressed sooner rather than later. Even if we don't make the November cutoff, we should get this ready to move forward and let the electorate decide how to best proceed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for that. We appreciate that as well. Communications and miscellaneous. David, anything this evening? The, uh, final punch list for the new development board?
Right. I was going to, hoping to speak to you about that before the meeting. David had some concerns about the trail that's associated with Hunter's Ridge and Corey Reserve. I'm, I'm going to ask the engineer to, to get together with me. Maybe we'll walk it.
Bring your heavy shoes.
Okay. Yeah. Plenty of rain hasn't there.
The developer believes that they're done with what they needed to do and David, it's-
I don't know. They-
I mean, when I talked about that last year, I thought that, um, their punch was supposed to just go through and write it up because it's, it's pretty rough. There's large bases of asphalt that you, if you just walk right there, you can break it down.
Okay.
So it's going to be a liability at some point and, and I like that. It's, I don't, doesn't really bother me very much. I'm fun, but it's not very fun to walk. And it's okay.
I'm going to guess that, um, our engineering inspector did not walk that trail when there was plenty of other punch list items to address. And so I think that's what we need to do is walk the trail and see what it is.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that up. That's, I was unaware. Anything else? Thank you, Steve?
Uh, nothing, sorry.
Pete?
I have nothing.
Craig?
No, I don't have anything.
Um, I just have a question for you for the, the new building that's going on the corner of Cornerstone. Is that, is the tenant, uh, scanning, uh, scan out? Because they have a sign there that said like future home of, and it had their name on it. And are they moving from Indianapolis to Twinsburg?
No, that would be awesome. I don't think that's happening.
The, the way the sign was, it kind of made you think, made me-
I think it's a Frito Lay distribution facility. Ha, that half of the building will be a Frito Lay distribution facility. The other half, I don't know. There's no tenant known to me.
Do we know that for a fact?
Um-
Are you sure?
Yeah. I, I, I think it's a fact, unless they've backed down.
Oh, that's awesome.
That was the rationale behind the additional truck parking spots when it went through for the revision.
First door.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, that's right. Uh, I, I, I ask you, I ask Pete, did you have anything?
You asked, that's all right.
Uh, so Lynn, uh, what, uh, what do we have, uh, looking forward to for upcoming meetings?
I would like to potentially at our next meeting, bring forward for just you guys to take a quick look at our goals and objectives that we've developed in the plan update committee. They're all relative to sustainability and, um, we've incorporated some resident actions along with the city actions. So if, if I could get those out to you and maybe just look for some preliminary comments.
That'd be nice. Um, how about anything to share regarding the selection for somebody to develop our piece of property?
Oh, okay.
On the old school. I, I heard a vicious rumor. Maybe it's not so vicious, but-
It's probably true. Yeah. Um, so the, the chosen partner is, um, Rob Benjamin with Heritage Development. Um, right now, there's a draft development agreement that, um, is under review and that's as far as we've gotten.
Well, is there anything coming before planning commission as any part of this process or is it not really until they have a site plan ready to?
There was something very conceptual, um, that was brought forward by Heritage Development that looked very much, very similar to the layout that you see in the 2014 comprehensive plan. Um, but I, I think the timeframe would be more by the end of the year, a development agreement is in place and the parameters of the project are more well-defined. And I would look to next year for a concept plan coming before the planning commission.
All right. Thank you for that.
I did one prior.
Yes?
Um, what's the timeframe for the sheet redo?
End of August. They said they were closing.
Yeah. To have construction complete or have it torn down?
Uh, start today.
Yeah, I know. They told me they were going to have it down today, but I, yeah. Um, I saw that they started.
But did they have it held there?
Yeah. They, it's fenced off.
Okay.
Um, yeah, their intent was to start tearing it, maybe, maybe they're doing it tonight. I don't know.
Unless they hold off because Circle K's can't be collapsed, BP's can't, it's not collapsed, which-
But at least the new Circle K has opened across the street, so we won't be without gasoline at that location.
That's good.
That was it. Sorry. Thanks.
No, no problem. Um, anything else, Lynn?
That's it.
Scott, I forgot to ask, was there anything? Scott, I forgot to ask you, was there anything from your standpoint?
No, nothing at this juncture. We haven't had, we haven't had a meeting since the beginning of July, so.
That's it.
Yeah, we'll get, get back in the groove next Tuesday.
Outstanding. All right. So, uh, then 7:50 adjournment.